And so I thought, well, gosh, if I don't know about the partnership, then I guess the rest of my fellow board members do not. So I asked Marina to come and kind of give us a brief overview of what the United Way...
Well, thank you so much for having me here today. Like Shannon said, we've met a few months back and she was surprised to realize what all United Way actually partners with in the schools. And Mr. Tyler and I have had some great meetings as well. And so we thought, let's just bring it full circle and get everybody on the same page and understanding of what United Way is doing in the schools. And so I handed you guys some brochures. These are our school campaign brochures for 2016. And the first thing I want to highlight to you, a very official thing that we are doing in the schools is we have started, and this is our third year, a youth board. So we have a member from every high school in Baldwin County Public Schools as a United Way of Baldwin County Youth Board Representative. So they are learning the, how important it is to engage in community service. They're learning about how it's important to help your fellow citizens. They're engaging their students in volunteer projects as well as fundraising projects. And it's also a great college resume builder, and they're also receiving scholarships for that. We have awarded scholarships to several of our youth board members over the past several years. And actually, at our luncheon last week, our youth board member was named Volunteer of the Year, Kylie Golden from Baldwin County High School last year. So we are engaging our high school seniors in that program that we feel we can help them develop them as they go away to college. And then hopefully, when they come back to Baldwin County, they already know what it means to be civically engaged and supporting the community. But I did want to highlight several of the programs and agencies that we support that directly affect the students in Baldwin County. Our first and most important is our medical partnership for children. This has been a program that has been going for more than 20 years. It was started by a gentleman at Foley who came down with cancer. His insurance ran out, and his coworkers did a fundraiser to provide him the funds that he needed for this crucial surgery. Before he had the surgery, he talked with his spouse and said, "If I don't make it through this surgery," or "to this surgery," I want these funds to go to help children's health needs in Baldwin County. He passed away, but the medical partnership was formed because of that. So what we do is we partner with all the school nurses in every public school in Baldwin County. When a child comes in and they have any type of medical illness, we have seen, of course, we see glasses a lot, we see diabetes a lot, we see asthma a lot, but we also have seen things like scabies and your regular flu that children need to go to a doctor and get some additional assistance with. But if that child is uninsured or underinsured, we step in and we cover that entire medical bill for that child. We do the medical negotiating for them, but they will not have a bill as a result of that. We pay for the prescriptions as well. And that program is obviously very important because we want to keep our kids healthy in the classroom so they have the best chance for learning. If they're sick, just like if we're sick, we're not going to be doing the best in our job. So that is one program we are very proud of, but not a lot of people are aware of. I would venture to say that probably most of you guys weren't aware of that program. In addition to that, we support multiple agencies that are supporting students in Baldwin County. Big Brothers Big Sisters is a great program that I personally think we need in more schools in Baldwin County. I am a big sister to a girl at Foley Intermediate School. And that program takes children that are from tough circumstances, less fortunate circumstances, and pairs them with a positive role model. They can mentor them year after year and make a lasting difference on that child. In addition to that, we support all of the youth clubs. Many of you are familiar with youth clubs in our county, Ruff Wilson, the Ruff Youth Club right here in Fairhope, Snook Youth Club, and In Light of the City in Baymanet. So all of these programs are after-school tutoring and summer care for these children. This keeps them off the streets, keeps them engaged, and gives them, again, a better chance for success. Of course, we all know about the Peer Helper Program. It's one of the greatest things in the school system, in my opinion. It does great things for our community. We are a funder of the Peer Helper Program through the Jennifer Claire Moore Foundation. We also support programs like The Boys Ranch, and as you were just asking me, that program's been going on for more than 30 years in this community and a great, great, great place, if you've never been out there. But then there's also things like Baldwin Youth Services, where when a child is on the edge of going into the juvenile system, they can go to Baldwin Youth Services and get intervention before they get into the criminal court system. If you will look in your brochure, all of the agencies that we support are listed. Some others that are directly affecting children are, of course, the Feeding the Gulf Coast and our Emergency Aid Agencies. Last year, we provided through United Way Funds, more than 21,000 backpacks to go to children on weekends, Baldwin County students that may not have something to eat on the weekend. When they leave school on Friday, they may not eat again until Monday because of the circumstances in their home. So we provided over 21,000 backpacks to children, the backpack programs, at various schools in our community. Of course, we also support proactive programs like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. We want to see our children grow up to be successful adults, and we want to see our children come back to our community. So we're just as supportive of our proactive programs as we are our reactive programs. We are ran by a local board. All of our dollars stay here in Baldwin County. I'm definitely not here asking for money today, but I do think that's important to know, that our board determines where every single dollar goes, and all of our dollars stay in Baldwin County. And we are very passionate with our partnership with the schools. If you were at the institute, you know, Mr. Tyler challenged the school employees to step up this year, which I'm happy to report. We only have three schools reporting so far, but everybody is about a triple increase. So so far, we're looking very good on that. But we want, we want our schools to come on board and support us, our teachers to support us. And I think a lot of that is just explaining what we really support that directly affects the students. So I will take any questions about us that you may have, or Shannon, if there's anything I didn't highlight that you want me to highlight. Come on.
I don't, you know, when I read the partners, the community partners, I mean, it's just, every one of these provide just very basic, essential services. A lot of those are knowledge. A lot of them depend, I know, very much on what you give them, on what your ideals are. I want to say thank you for what you do for Baldwin County.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, it is, it's, it's really heartwarming when you can see someone's life changed because of programs that they've gone through that are a direct result of the United Way. And, you know, sometimes we don't realize how that one, that one instance, for example, with our medical partnership, we had a girl about five years ago at a school in Baldwin County that was going in to see the school nurse nine times a day for insulin shots. And her single mom could not afford the $800 insulin pump. She was a C-average student. Naturally, she was leaving the classroom nine times a day. You're going, you're not going to be able to do your best. And we stepped in and we paid for that insulin pump. Five years later, she's consistently on the A.V. honor roll and actually is a volunteer of ours now. She's still in the Baldwin County Public School System. And we stepped in one time and we truly, truly transformed her life. And that's what it takes. And, you know, so we're proud to do what we do. We're proud to support you guys and everything you do. I realize y'all have a thankless job for sure, but we're, we're proud to support this community. We know that these services are a direct result of the low crime that we have in Baldwin County, the safe place we have to live. And without these partners, what, what, it would be a very different world where we are. So. Any other questions?
No, you reach out, your kickoff lunch is always, has always been something to draw together a lot of players that really have an interest and desire to be a part of the United Way. So it's another good initiative, Speaker. That's outstanding. So we'll be in touch on that.
It was very powerful. You know, the unique thing about United Way is you do bring the businesses and the nonprofits together, and you make it a truly cohesive approach to solving the community issues. And it really takes us all. So the kickoff luncheon is a great example of us together to support that.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing and taking the time to be here. Like I said, stories like the insulin pump, you know, that's, that's important, and we all need to hear that. We need to understand what causes them to be important. So thank you. Thank you.
Let me ask you, does each school have contact with United Way?
Yes.
Could you share that list with us so we can get them connected with someone?
Yes, absolutely. We've been communicating with them because we're in the middle of the campaign right now, but I can get to that list as well.
And we can support you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on our list is discussion about the Baldwin County Education Coalition contract. Excuse me, I'm having a problem tonight. At last month's board meeting, we kind of talked briefly about the contract and what services we thought were important, what we wanted to see that partnership with the Coalition work look like. And I went home and kind of thought about it, and Terry's here tonight to give us some more specifics and some more information. And my goal for tonight, just so you guys are aware, I would like Terry to leave tonight having some sort of idea on how to move forward and what we would like to see with the Coalition. So. It's all you.
It's all me?
It's all you.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you wanted to, if you guys just had specific questions you wanted to ask me, or if you want me to just kind of go down the list and explain some of the items in a little more detail?
Well, if I, if I can interrupt for just a minute, I think at the end of last month's discussion, the majority of us were in agreement that we thought one of the most important services the Coalition offers, or will offer with this new contract is the conversation. We need advocates to go out and help us, share our message, and reach out to the public in businesses and in places that maybe necessarily we don't have access to. And so I left last month's meeting, as did Janay. She and I had an opportunity to talk, and she felt the same, that that was probably the most important item that we needed to work for going forward. I think there are other things on the list of potential services that are also important and that we need to talk about because, like we talked about at last month's board meeting, Terry and the Coalition need to budget, they need to plan, and they need to know how to move forward, at least in the meantime. So that is why I asked this to be on the agenda and asked that we, when we leave here tonight, Terry has an idea of what to go back to the rest of the Coalition with and then.
And bring that list of services with you.
I do not either. Do you have that contract, or do you have what the services are? Can you give us?
Can we go back? I'm sorry, I haven't moved the notes.
No, no.
Is it in, on a board somewhere?
Can we get, no, it's not. We need to get that. Can we get a couple of copies? That'd be great. Yes. Thank you. I thought about that a minute ago. I was looking for the link to go back over to the hallway.
No, and you know what? Because I think I didn't get it in a packet, or was it in a, because I got an email to me the next day, so mine is in an email on my.
I think we had it hard copies last time.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I think it was part of the agenda.
Was it? I'm trying to figure out how to get it back there and get the copies.
The last board meeting?
I'm pretty sure it was in there, but in fact, it was an item.
It may have been.
Well, while, while we're waiting on the copies, I can just say a few general things. I know if you, if you look at where we are now with our partnership with Coalition and the Baldwin County Schools versus where we were four years ago when, you know, with our very first contract for services, I think the biggest differences, and Mr. Tyler alluded to this at the board meeting last month, I think he referred to it as reinventing ourselves. But it's, you know, we were so advocacy-focused, and I think that is something that is very difficult to demonstrate a value on, to maybe show return on investment, because it's not real tangible, it's not a program, it's not a, you know. And so over the past year, I think the things that we started to do that are more program and service-related, it's become a little, maybe it's made it a little more clear and a little easier to show more specifically. And it was when we were putting together the annual report that I approached Mr. Tyler with the, with the idea, you know, of presenting this a little differently this time, like a menu of services, because we can show the amount of time, you know, that goes into each of those different items and what the associated cost is, should you choose to go with those items, versus past is just this blanket amount. And so, so that's, I would say, is the main difference of why we're kind of taking this approach versus what we did before. Then it becomes a lot easier in the monthly reporting, you know, being able to show our deliverables and being held accountable for those deliverables. I think doing it this way.
I have no, the advocacy, advocacy part of it, no question. Extremely valuable, hard to put price on, in my opinion. The, and I don't know, the grant writing, I have some concerns about. Actual development, I can see that being valuable, but depending on what it is. Is that something that we're trying to expand on, or is that based on what we've done in the last two years, say?
Yeah, and maybe it'd be helpful if I do just go, let's take one item at a time, and I'll, I'll expand upon it a little bit. Okay, with the, the, I think, under, let me grab a copy here. So we've, we've already talked about the Great Conversation. That will be the actual engagement process that we're about to undergo. The Education Summit, and we have it under engagement because in our minds, this is really a conference to help bring the community together, to inform them of what we're doing, a state of the, of the school system, share with them the strategic plan, you know, all those things that the community, you know, because we, we're not producing currently an annual report to our citizens. So we see that as a, you know, as a way to, you know, bring our community together and provide them with a venue to help inform them and, and, you know, keep them engaged and aware of what's going on in the school system. We, we see, just like we did with the Supporting Our Schools Campaign, we very strategically planned it, you know, a month prior to the vote because we thought it would be a good way to launch that campaign. And I think using the summit in that way, you know, and the, the very specific plans, specific plans for the engagement process are still, we're not, they're not finalized yet. And once they are, I really want to come back and share with all of you the timeline, exactly what that's going to look like, the questions we're going to be asking out in the community, because we really see this as a two-phase process. The first phase is going out and sharing, is practicing Habit Five, which is seek first to understand, then to be understood. So it's, it's, the first phase is going out and just asking the questions and gathering the information from our citizens, bringing it back, and, and then being able to inform you, this is what our, the community said they're willing to support and what they expect. And then you can use that, and you can use that as leverage then in, in deciding how you're going to move forward. And we need to be very transparent in letting them know these conversations are about funding of our public school, not that we're trying to, you know, hide anything. So I think then you use something like a summit after this first phase to say, well, here's what we, you know, here's what we heard you say, and based on that, now we have this plan. And you, you know, the summit before this past one, we used, for example, to launch the Build Baldwin Now Campaign. We did it in an evening, the Daphne Civic Center was packed. But anyway, that's, that's helping you understand more about what that is. We can get businesses to offer sponsorships. We did for the one this past February, and in fact, used that to help pay for our keynote speaker, Jamie Bulmer. But I'll say, we obtained $13,000 in sponsorships, and our expenses were well over $18,000. The, the school system stepped in and helped pay for the expense of all the chairs because we want, you know, all the employees came. But, you know, we made up the other difference for, for that event. So having the district partner with the event, you know, it's just gives us leverage to, if we do need a keynote speaker, we do need a production company to come in, do need to rent chairs, you know. So that's the summit.
You know, you struck a nail at the advisory committee. One of the criticisms they give the system is, we're good at getting information out, but collecting information or hearing from, hearing from our parents, from stakeholders, we're not good at that. And that's what you're basically saying, this will make us better.
Exactly. This engagement process is doing exactly that. So then the advisory groups, and that's plural because it's more than just the, the Citizens' Advisory Council for Education that formalized after the task force. I think we, we've experienced the benefits of, of the engagement process when we did it in 2010, and when we engaged the task force, which was roughly 21 people in the end. A broader reach. And so what we envision with, with that, in addition to helping to facilitate the work of the advisory council, engaging groups have a broad reach and, and kind of a grassroots, you know, kind of engagement. Groups such as our elected officials, the employees, and these are all levels, the business community, our, our community in general, retirees, parents, our civic organizations, students, you know, and under those boxes, we have a lot of other boxes. As important as it is to, to also engage our civic groups, those organizations that we always go to whenever we have some type of engagement or, or campaign, that it's, it's really like, you know, preaching to the choir. They are our supporters already, so we're really wanting to take this to the next level, and that is asking our supporters to agree to host something in their home, in their community, to invite their neighbors, people that we're not sure if they support the district, if they're aware of, you know, they don't necessarily have opportunities, if they're not part of the civic group, you know, to hear and understand, you know, what we're doing. So that's what we're talking about as far as facilitating all the different advisory groups, that somebody needs to bring them together because they don't just come together on their own, you know, to engage, excuse me, engage them.
I think on that note too, I think that we're doing a good job of that on county level, countywide. I think we need to work on drilling that down into the communities because there's this great countywide movement going on and engaging these people that have, you know, picks in their homes and all that. But even when we were doing the, the building campaign, I don't remember which one it was, I guess it was the first one, where we would have the town hall meetings, not with, by the school board doing it, but if, you know, the Coalition having that town hall setting in the community, inviting that particular community to get the word out. I just, I just hear a lot that things are going on in the county, but it doesn't seem to be much going on in my community, in my district, or, you know, going on on the island. Maybe if they're countywide, and people on the island are going, but they're somewhere else. But the general population doesn't have an opportunity to participate.
Exactly. And you're exactly right. That's, we need to bring the message to them. It's a large county. Okay, now for the grant writing. I know, you know, we were able to take funds that we had obtained from the very first summer conference, and, and I don't mean to skip around, but that professional development line is, is the, it's the Gulf Regional Innovative Teaching Conference, it's the summer conference. And when we helped sponsor the conference in 2014, and we obtained a good number of sponsorships, we used the proceeds from that conference and stretched it out over a period of time. The last $10,000 of that is what we used to help pay the grant writer to write the grant we recently submitted to the National Science Foundation. And I know there, there is, heard by the questions and comments that were made at the board meeting last month, you may be considering looking at, you know, internally maybe hiring your own full-time grant writer, or seeing if someone internally has the time to write grants, or, you know, whatever that is. I, I would have, I would like to make some suggestions and, and just offer, in, in offering this service, to do it through the Coalition, I, I hope you, maybe the bargain that, that we got by running this through the Coalition to write this National Science Foundation grant. As I mentioned, Linda, who, you know, is, has over a 90% success rate, you know, she was an educator, administrator, grant writer, has written for districts all over, you know, the nation, and it, she typically charges $150 an hour, gave us a discounted rate at $100 an hour, knew our limited funds that we had available, didn't want to leave us hanging, ended up donating 200 hours, but because we're a nonprofit, we're able to, you know, provide her and her business a tax deductible receipt for those hours that she, you know, contributed. Now, I don't know if the district would be very successful in, in finding a grant writer out there that's willing to give you a significant price rate, you know. I think a lot of that came too because of the relationship that I already had with Linda and her desire to support the district. and her desire to support the district and the community, you know. That's, that's another way I hope that you as a district and, and a board view the coalition, you know, of having this ability to leverage these partnerships and relationships that we have out in the community. A lot of businesses and, and individuals who really want to support the district are ready to do so. It's just a matter of, of making an ask and engaging them and giving them that opportunity. You know, and doing that through a nonprofit gives them that opportunity, you know, to have a tax deduction. So that, you know, that's something else. Also, whether you do decide to do this through us or through the, find someone, you know, internally. You know, it takes someone with a unique talent. I think Linda is so successful because she really understands what it takes. When you look at a funder, first of all, you don't want to seek to apply for a grant to meet a need in the district. Because we don't want to, you know, seek funding and have to do all the work to submit that and then all the work that's required to, you know, if it's not something that we know is going to meet a need. Don't create something just to get that funding. I mean, that's just a recommendation. But, you know, it would, I would suggest the first step would be identifying what grants there versus what, you know, what, what are the needs of the district? And see what grant opportunities there are for us that, you know, that we would qualify for, to, to apply for. And maybe having that, a list like that might help you make a better decision, you know. Gosh, if, you know, if there's two or three opportunities, maybe it's not worth having a full-time grant writer. If there are, you know, multiple opportunities, then maybe it's worth looking into having a grant writer. But that's something we would be happy to, to do for you. If you still want to keep this one table, that item, you know, and we'd be happy to go out and try to do a little research and let you know, these are things that we see might be a good match for the district. You know, we don't want to spend time, we would never spend time writing a grant that we knew the district wouldn't support, you know, us writing. Because the money's going to go into the district and they have to manage it and, you know. So anyway, those are just some things I wanted to put out there to still kind of consider with that particular item.
My question there is, first of all, I think finding someone in the district that's already doing the job to try to write grants is, in my opinion, a ridiculous notion. Because that's, it's a lot of time and effort and just, I mean, everyone that we've got in the central office and in the, all the teachers, everyone, the school already has enough on their plate with the small staffs they have. That, I don't think it's fair to put another job that big on somebody else. The, how much, so the grant, the grant writer that we had, she, she has been working on this one grant. See, my, my question is, I thought I saw somewhere in the paperwork where that we had received maybe a little over five thousand dollars in grants. Did I read that or did it go in there?
No, I, the coalition received, you know, a grant for five thousand dollars from a local foundation, the Matt Family Foundation, and it was to help with our Alvin Partners Program. Yeah, to help produce the materials and stuff.
I'm trying to make sure that if you spend thirty thousand dollars, that the return on that money
Right.
is, is good. Because if we spend thirty and we get twenty-five thousand grants.
Oh, yeah.
That we have, we have, she was submitting to science about what is the fund she's working on now.
We just submitted the national, it's to the National Science Foundation. It's a research-based grant. It's an eye test grant. Innovative technology experiences and, and teachers. It's three years. I mean, most, the majority of the funds for teacher professional development, it's a STEM, you know, science, technology, engineering and math-based grant. For the whole league, we're, one point two million over three years.
So if you did something like that, then it's, it's in Auburn hindsight.
Exactly.
So, you know, until we spend it the first year, just like if you hired somebody, you would have to hope that they, that they get a grant too. So, I mean, I guess you could try it the first year and if it doesn't work, then next year you don't have to do it again. And then, but.
Other larger systems, is there?
The conference time has shown up top of the conversation for us. I think back a ways, there used to be probably more grant writers and systems than there are now because of what happened in late 2008 and on into, you know, 2010 beyond. Some of your larger systems.
Does that cause the grants went away?
I think that probably had a little bit to do with it, it was a little bit difficult. Probably have some employees that, like Mr. Mike says, it might, that might be one of their main responsibilities. And to his point, we, we have employees that are, that are good writers, but they're writing specifically for their doing and so involved in that. We mentioned her as an excellent grant writer, I mean, John mentioned her for after-school care. She's got three, five, three new grants, five total, I believe, one hundred fifty thousand off grant for after-school care. But she's so wrapped up in the largest after-school childcare system in state that it's hard for her just to say to be peeled off and write grants specifically that might be of an educational value or professional development value. I think the concept is good, but like Ms. Ryder said, you know, I've not really brought anybody excessive, excess people on board other than specific people to do specific tasks. Nobody extra clerks, you know, those type things to do extra work. So it's, it's pretty tight right now.
Exactly. I talked to the county state that we were trying to investigate. We found a labor, I think the county has a division called Research and Assessment, which is like our three-person, or two-person assessment. But they have twelve people in that division. So that do grant writing, do research and take their assessment. So, you know, it's perhaps twelve people that work on that.
Just, just, I don't think this has a special role to play here. We don't have anybody doing this service that she's proposing around now. I just allow, we're a large school system. We're half the size of Mobile County, but that twelve, I think should we consider having four? I don't know. No, I don't. Their, their expenses are higher than us percentage-wise. So there's a reason it's higher. They've got twelve people.
We have retired employees, which is, we have forty, it was nineteen hours a week. You know, and so you have retired employees that might have skills such as that. Possibly if you talk about maybe employing those people, three or four of them, you know, at nineteen hours a week, you know, as opposed to a full-time, you know, salary benefit person.
And, and that's where I was, like, with the salary benefits, hiring just one person to do the work like that. Then we can partner with the coalition for their price. You know, it kind of, it doesn't make any sense to go out and hire a full-time employee, pay salary and benefits, and, you know, in three years they get tenure. And then now what do we do when we're not getting any grants? You know, it, it's sort of a waste when we can spend a fraction of the cost and, and try it out for a year, maybe two, and see what we get. I mean, it's, I, you know, there's no right or wrong, there's just different options.
Just second to point about thirty thousand dollars and what's our return? You know, is it five thousand and thirty thousand for a year, twenty-five thousand? There possibly could be something that says, okay, here's thirty thousand dollars. Now, this is what we expect to return on our investment. And then we have to evaluate that as this time goes on. Is, is it producing? And if not, then back in and see what's a better approach.
Well, you don't get, I don't care who you are, when you write those grants, you're not going to get all of them right. And that's a fact. But Mobile County wouldn't have twelve people on there writing grants if they wasn't making money out of it. They're not out there just paying people. They worried about three years later, tenureing those people. Those people continuously writing grants. And they get turned down on more than they're getting. But when they get one or two all along, it's, it's kind of home run hit because it's, it can run up into hundreds of thousands, even millions of dollars, which it's out there for the getting. Somebody's going to get it. I'd like for us to get some of it. Well, we've talked all around this, and we've been very frugal and very careful and very cautious. But Linda has a rate, a success rate of ninety percent. You know you don't get a hundred percent, but ninety percent sounds phenomenal. And this is a bargain. I think this is an absolute bargain, paying for the buck. And yet, it will be evaluated. You know, we, we pay thirty thousand dollars and, you know, I mean, that's, you, you know that it's, it's negotiable. But I, I think this is a thing for a buck while it's due.
Is this, and I don't know if this question was answered last month, so forgive me. This fee for grant writing, is that her grant or is that for a year and whatever we get out of her?
That's why, that's for this coming, you know, this contract, this is her term.
To, to write as many grants as she can find that will fit our needs in the upcoming year.
And, and honestly, both of us work on this together. I, I'm going to give you an example. You know, she put in a great deal of the work in, in writing this grant foundation. And Linda, the project is, is defined. And we plan to take that project and submit it to several local foundations across the bay that I've had a lot of success with when I was executive director of the Chamber Foundation. You know, obtaining some local funding support as well. It won't be one point two million, but it'll, you know, it'll be a good amount of money that we can probably get locally to, you know, to continue to kind of grow that program. And, but it's something that I can do. Because, you know, their, their grant applications to these local foundations are not near as complicated and technical as these federal grants that I have, I've never applied. You know, I had to have someone like Linda with her expertise to help with a grant like that because it was just way beyond my skill set. But, you know, to, so, so you're not just using that to pay Linda. It's, it's to pay the coalition for that work. And that's why we can do it. It's a bargain, you know, because I don't cost as much as Linda. Any other questions about the grant writing? Okay, then the professional development piece, that's what I mentioned, is, is grits. And the, I, I just wanted, I don't know how much you know about this past summer's conference. There were over five hundred and fifty teachers over the four-day time span. A hundred leaders or administrators, principals, assistant principals. That received PLUs. And that is, of course, hours that they need to maintain their certification. There were over six thousand professional development hours offered in that four-day time span with all of the breakout sessions and all of the different tracks that, you know, were made available. It, it's a significant savings to the district to be able to host training here locally. You're not having to pay those travel costs, you know, to send people to other districts or other places around the state or the country, you know, for professional development. I think, you know, after this conference, there's a lot of support to grow the conference. I think it's proven, you know, to be a, a real success. Now, in 2014, we obtained, I, I brought some numbers that I wanted to share with you. You're going to find this rather interesting. In sponsor shorts, we obtained a hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars total revenue for the conference. About thirty thousand of that was registration by sixty-six people that paid four hundred and seventy-five dollars per person to attend that conference. Now, that year, everybody who signed up and paid an entry fee also received an iPad. And that, you know, their registration fee went towards paying the expense for the iPad. But this year, of course, we, well, and expenses then were a hundred and two thousand. So the total profit was twenty thousand dollars, basically. Now, for this year's conference, we obtained twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in revenue. We kept our expenses to a bare, bare minimum at three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And our profit is twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five. So although we didn't, you know, receive as much rev, in revenue for this conference, because we were able to cut on a lot of the expenses, you know, we still had, we had more net profit, you know, in the end. But, you know, using, using the district's dollars to help with this conference, you know, as leverage with all the other sponsorship dollars that we're able to obtain, I think is, is a great way that we can, we can do more for the employees. I think this conference does a lot. When you're, when you bring them together, typically, we're not able to provide lunch or breakfast or coffee or T-shirts or, you know, goodie bags or things like that for the employees. I think those things go a long way towards helping them, you know, feel valued and, and appreciated. We would love to be able to do more for them. We use those funds if we want to bring in keynote speakers. I think this year's keynote speaker was in kinds. We didn't have a huge expense, you know, for a keynote speaker. We didn't obtain as much in sponsorship dollars this go-round as we did two years ago, mainly because a lot of those vendors are no longer vendors of the district, like Eye Station, Novation, Rosetta Stone. They were big, big dollar sponsors. And, and, you know, if they're not vendors, they don't want to give us their sponsorship dollars. You know, which is understandable. I'm fine. You know, but the ones who are do want to support and stepped up and supported us and we just kept the costs, you know, under control. Anyway, I think, you know, I hope you consider that to be of value and want to invest in, in the, the conference. That's what that is for professional development.
I think having something here in Baltimore County that our own teachers can attend and be a part of and it's hope that we take pride in that in, you know, this quarter.
And then for the two items under other services, the ACT Work Ready Communities Initiative. I, you know, we did a special presentation at the June board meeting, so I don't know that there's any need for me to go into more detail about that. And then the last item, it says coordinate communication services. What, how that i, particular item came about? In the district's consideration of a contract for services with John Gray, a question was asked of me. asked of me if the coalition might have the ability to provide similar services. And my response was, I do not have that skill set. I am not a politician. I'm not a political advisor and that is, you know, beyond what I can provide as far as a service. However, I think, you know, we do have relationships in the community that we are happy to try to bring to the table to see about, you know, providing those services or that, you know, you could then decide, I'm mainly looking at Mr. Tyler, you know, decide who you might want to partner with. One advantage, I would say, and I'll give you this example, with the work that we did with the task force, and here again, this is another benefit to allowing your partner to get out there and kind of make these asks for you sometimes. You know, the task force did all this work and wanted to produce this report to be able to give to the board, to you, and to the community. And because we had two public relational, public relation professionals on the task force, they donated their time in actually writing that report, designing that report, you know, and putting that report together. Dare I say, if you would have contracted that out, you would have paid big money for a report like that. And then the coalition paid the expense for printing the report. But I mean, that's just one example, relationships that we have that we're happy to facilitate, you know, bringing them in and letting the staff decide who they want to work with and, you know, and what they might be willing to do in that capacity. So with all of that, everything listed here totals seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is more than we have contracted with the coalition in the past and more than we approved Mr. Tyler to contract with the coalition. So we need to look at this list and we need to decide what is important, what would we like to see moving forward? So I'll give my two cents or I'm opening the floor to anyone else.
I don't, you know, everything on the list is to me, I need to expand to sixty thousand, seventy-nine, whatever it was. Yeah, I just don't see anything there I really want to cut. So to me, it's a bargain. Each line item is a bargain, but I agree with you.
I totally agree with that. I think it's absolutely imperative that we partnership and I think that's a great value.
I agree. I mean, I can't see, I, let me, let's talk about the grant for just a minute. I would like to see some success before we totally commit to that, but I also understand that that is such a huge bargain and I almost feel like I would be kicking myself in the behind for not saying, well, let's just try it for one year and let's see what kind of success we have, if we have success. We can always reevaluate, you know, next year on whether or not we feel like we got anything for our dollar where it comes to grant writing. The summer conference, I think, is great. I think it's been successful. We need to continue to do that. I mean, people look to Baldwin County and what we're doing and so it's nice to kind of show off. It's nice to kind of say, hey, look at us. And I would love to continue to see us do that. Everything under item one, under engagement, the great conversation, the education summit where we reach out to the county, whether it be kickoff, you know, of a campaign or, you know, we went out, we had many conversations, and this is what we heard you say. And now this is what the system, this is our answer. This is what we, you know, even for that price. I mean, that's just, we need to do that. And so I would also be in agreement with full contract.
I agree. I think, again, everything engagement is worth of what you're asking for here. Even the other areas, the grits conference is fantastic, the other services. The grant writing was the only thing that I originally had a question about, but, you know, after talking more about it, I do think that that's the right way. It's better to do it with the coalition. I think it's hire nineteen-hour people to, you know, you're gonna pay that and probably not get the same caliber of income that the coalition already has engaged. So, and I know Janey felt the same way in conversations that I had with her, by no means do I want to speak for her, was a concern to her as well. And I think, I think through conversations with her, hearing the explanation, she would agree that even if we just try it and see. So I don't think we need to encumber our system with additional employees for that. So there's nothing else there that I think is, that we can do without. So I agree with you. Would you like?
No.
So with that being said, we, I guess, are going to need an agenda item to amend the decision, however that needs to be worded or worked out, we're gonna have to increase the amount of contracts with the coalition.
One thing, just my comment on the grant, you know, with a ninety percent success rate. You would hope, playing percentages is old code sometimes, if she writes ten grants, our chances of getting nine of them are pretty good. If she writes ten one-hundred-thousand-dollar grants and we come up with nine-hundred-thousand dollars, we hope that would definitely be a positive. I mean, she writes them, maybe we'll come up with six, six-hundred-thousand dollars is better than what we have right now, which is not... And that particular piece, I think, grant writing is very important.
Are you touched yet?
No, no, I mean, we'll look at it. No, because this is, we all need to determine the path, you know, I can't change it. And like I said, I think from what I've seen when I was here in the past and what I see now with the coalition, it's a repurposing to them. I would say, and Angie was here, a lot of us were, but when the coalition was getting started, Miss Acres from Mobile was over here, got a whole bunch of folks, but it was more kind of like in-your-face type stuff, you know, and the employees were trying to get a hold of it and try to understand what our role was. And it was being driven by very few, other than y'all trying to get a handle on it. Here I see a, really a softer, better side of, here we are, we'd like to partner, continue to partner, and we know that y'all drive the train, but we want to help blow the whistle and do all those other things. I've been impressed with what I've seen.
I think the coalition began as a necessity to get the penny tax passed and I said this once before, it would have never happened without the coalition. It was a campaign train to get that tax passed and it worked. It was an incredible ground roots effort. And I think now more through the support system for this, which I think is perfect.
So Eddie, are you kind of saying that you would suggest or you're in agreement, I think, on going forward with all these line items?
I am. I think I'm very selective in how we spend money. So look at the guys, spend money, spend money for all the right reasons, like taking a thousand dollars off of reading coaches and things of that nature. Your question to me keeps coming back from the virtue stream. What would we do if we don't have coalition? And my initial view was, I have no idea. So yes, it is an increase. Y'all are aware of our finances. Like, we're out there, you know, hiring every kind of position we can hire, where we're doing what we can do for the good of students and teachers, but I would support, you know, the manner in which the coalition is coming to partner in this repurposing, you know.
And I think very grateful, thank you for your confidence in our organization. I really appreciate it.
We'll work on it, Janine. I'm really usually correct.
That's why I was like, I was looking at Scotty and Louise, however, y'all need to figure that out. We need to change this.
I have next on our agenda, Ms. Woodburn, to talk about curriculum goals and concerns.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all. We're gonna go through several items that we're dealing with in the district that are extremely important. They're all about student achievement. So let's take a look at what we have up here. First of all, let's talk about some of the goals that we have in curriculum and instruction for the district. The primary goal is that we want to raise Baldwin County's reputation and ranking within the state. In years past, we were ranked higher than we are now. Okay? We've taken kind of a decline over the past several years. And so one of the major conversations that Mr. Tyler and I had, you know, about, you know, when we were discussing me coming back, was the goal is to help us get back to where we deserve to be because we have an excellent system.
How long, what period of time has that been? How long have we been more than declined?
Probably about seven years.
I got you back in.
So in order to do that, we need to make all of our district decisions based on what the numbers and the data tell us. So we need to be very data-driven. We also have, under Mr. Tyler's leadership and Homer has helped with this, we have replaced the MacBooks with Chromebooks, a much, much more inexpensive product, and it is a very good product and it's serving our students well. So we want to use technology to enhance instruction. We also want to talk this, this school year, and Marty is gonna take the lead on this, to try to standardize scheduling, particularly at the high school level throughout the district. Okay? So that's a big endeavor and we're gonna take that on in January. Another thing that we have that we want to work on is we want to help our problem-solving teams develop a more standardized and systemic approach to RTI, which is called, which is an acronym for Response to Intervention. Problem-solving teams exist in every single school. Do y'all know about problem-solving teams? Okay. For children that are, okay, go ahead.
My mind usually, you'll learn soon enough. I need to back up. You made the statement for about seven years. So you know what happened during this seven years? We lost hundreds of teachers. Things changed dramatically for this system during that seven years. So I guess it cannot surprise anyone that that didn't affect learning.
Absolutely. It's classroom success.
I mean, it's almost like you've got to expect it. So when you're making that statement, are you comparing us to the state or you compare us, that we dropped in?
Statewide rankings.
Statewide rankings.
Yes, sir. Statewide rankings. But I believe that, now Jennifer, you might be able to answer this. We haven't gotten back to the two thousand and eight personnel levels, you know, for a long time. But I still believe with what we have, we can exceed expectations. We can really, why, it's because we have excellent people.
I agree. I'm just... I think this system took bigger hits than other systems. So to say we dropped, there are reasons.
Absolutely.
There may even be reasons that other people stayed where they were, did not take the hits that we took with personnel.
Yeah.
See this, see this, Eddie? I don't think we're on a per people ratio, ask the information that we're working for that. I think we're at some lengths we were in eleven. I don't know that. But, you know, we were at eight, two thousand and eight, we were here, and two thousand and eleven, we were here. I don't think we've changed, but I don't know that yet.
I don't know. You mean with regard to personnel?
Yeah, in regard to, we're sitting in front of each one of our teachers.
I think we've gained in students, but I don't think we've gained much in personnel.
But it's, to me, that's basic and core to what you're talking about.
Sure. And you can interrupt me anytime.
And then you're totally valid, what you said, but I didn't look at that as a reason or an excuse. It's a fact. We did where we were, and we all know why. But I mean, and it's bad that it's that way, but that's just the cars where that was right now.
I don't think most people know why.
I think you're probably right, Mr. Tyler. I really do. I think most John Q. Public probably doesn't know the reasons why.
Yeah, they just say we dropped. Well, what does that mean?
Well, that's another reason we've got the coalition to fight for us and that's to know. Other than the perception of that.
If that statement is made in the public, then it's... And there are a lot of new people, and we get new people every day. There are a lot of new people in Baldwin County that don't know what happened in oh-eight and oh-nine. They don't, they don't know what kind of hits we've taken. They've all been here maybe for four years.
A lot of them moved here for the school system, so I mean...
I thought when we go out and talk to people, and I don't think any of us have the idea that we're gonna go out and start talking about ranking and our system, say why, but I do talk to people that, you know, we've kind of been beat up a little bit over the last several years for funding and cuts and everything, and we're not where we want to be as a school system, uh, moving forward academically. And there's been reasons for that, but we're gonna overcome those reasons. So we're not gonna go out and give any kind of rankings or anything like that to draw attention to.
No. But, you know, it is a good point because I think we could also make the point that we've been in such a funding crunch since oh-nine, oh-eight and oh-nine, that we've spent, as a system, as a board and as central office staff, has spent so much time trying to recover, campaign after campaign after campaign, that academics has taken a back seat to trying to find money to run the system.
And so I mentioned, Mr. Tyler's overarching goal is to get us back where we need to be.
That's this nice lady right here, in her job description.
Well, and I'm glad to be here. I really am. All right, so we'll continue on. Every school has a problem-solving team and it's a, there are a variety of members on this problem-solving team. And when children are identified as not being proficient academically, their names are brought before the team and then the... and then the team discusses ways that they can intervene to help the child, um, become more proficient. So that's what a problem-solving team does. And one of the things that we're working on right now in the district is to develop a more strategic and academic approach to intervention. Okay, so that's one of our goals. Another one, um, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the State Department of Education, um, has required us to screen everybody, every child in the system for dyslexia. That's 31,000 students. So we're developing a protocol for screening dyslexia right now. And probably the biggest reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you about what's coming up in December. We're getting our first report card from the State Department. Back in the day, we used to get report cards before, but now we're starting to get, we're going to get a report card in December 2016. Okay, I think you need to be prepared for that. So, one of the things that we're going to do to try to get ourselves right on track academically is the creation of pacing guides. Do y'all know what pacing guides are? Pacing guides, if I'm teaching, um, a history class, U.S. history, um...
And this is your pacing guide?
Yes, yes. The state tells me what I have to teach. If, without a pacing guide, I can teach it in any order I want to. And I'm just one U.S. history teacher, but there are 55 others in the district. So without a pacing guide, we're all doing our own thing. And we're doing it, we're teaching different units at different times. With pacing guides, everybody in the district is doing the same thing at the same time. Um, I'm not saying everybody's on the same lesson every day, but every nine weeks, the same material is covered in each school. Does that make sense? Per course. So, at this point, elementary teachers have our, already have pacing guides because our elementary team and a bunch of teachers created those this summer. Secondary pacing guides are going to be created starting in October and November. Okay, so we've got that going on. We have a couple issues with development pacing guides that you need to be aware of. First of all, um, math and science pacing guides are difficult to create because we've got a couple statewide programs that we have to deal with and incorporate their information into our pacing. And they are called ANSTI and STEM, or STEM scopes, alrighty? Also, I don't know if you're aware, but there are three different curricula in math in elementary school. And one of the things that I've been charged with is to try to get us all on one thing, one thing. So we're kind of working on that. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but, um, we have had a lack of math textbooks with, uh, in courses above Algebra II with trig for, for a while now. And John Wilson has been wonderful about helping us creatively find some ways to get some money to, to purchase those math textbooks for the higher, for the more advanced math courses. Another issue I don't know if you're aware of is that we don't have textbooks for social studies. We don't have physical textbooks. And we also are missing some textbooks for English Language Arts courses. And you know, I think, back to your, um, question or your statement, Mr. Tarwater, I think that maybe some of the academic decline that we have seen over these past couple of years has been due to a lack of a tactile book that kids can use. I think a lot of children need that tactile book as opposed to reading everything online with an online textbook. All right, can I? Yes.
I'll say, before we go to the next question, I want to go back to the textbooks. I don't think, I don't think I'm hearing you say we need textbooks and the online version. In other words, I don't think I'm hearing you say we need duplicates, but I think that's what I'm hearing you say.
No, you're not hearing me say that.
Okay.
Either or. Either or. And as, as textbook adoptions come around, every six years we go through textbook adoptions. We will get together with teachers, there's a state protocol that we have to follow. And we will let the teachers on the textbook committee decide whether we're going to do a print book or an online version, okay? So that's all committee-driven.
And that was my question because one of the reasons for moving away from physical textbooks was that, first of all, social studies. By the time in six years, six years comes around, those are outdated and the information's no longer correct. So there's...
But the online version is the same way. And, I don't know if you're aware of this, but the online version constitutes as much as the textbook. So, there are several issues with all of this. And I'm not saying one is better than the other. I'm just saying that I think that some students really need a, a book, a book. So just, you know, keep that in the back of your head.
One thing I want to say about your pacing guides and standards. We've always had course of studies, we've always had standards that we have to do every year. With that, you might teach math every year in high school. You know, with the standards, once you're talking about a pacing guide, if you have 10th grade, 10th graders in English Language Arts, they need to get those, that, those that say it's 45 standards they need to have in 10th grade. They won't be re-taught in 11th grade. Whereas in the past, it's always been a repeat, just a repeat, uh, of, of course of studies and, and things of that nature. So, so important to keep our teachers in step, knowing that if I've got 50 standards to teach this year in English Language Arts, I need to make sure that every nine weeks I'm trying to stay somewhere, uh, ahead of the curve or right on line because these 10th graders won't get any more than this, 11th graders that could help them in English Language Arts. They're 11th grade, so it's just very important.
Um, let's say that we've got 10th grade English, or we've got 10th graders at Fairhope High School, and one or two have been transferred to, um, Gulfshores High School. If we don't have pacing, if we don't have pacing, who knows what those 10th graders, when they get to Gulfshores High School, will face? Will they have to repeat curriculum? Or will they miss something altogether? So pacing is very, very important, very important for the district and for students. All right, so now let's talk about the report card, okay? In December of this year, schools are going to get a report card unless you have a, you're a school with a K3 configuration. Okay, and that's not very many, how many, three?
Fairhope Elementary, Auburn Elementary, and Tito next year.
That's about it?
That's it.
Okay. But, if you're in a K5 or a K6 configuration, you will get a report card. The report cards, the biggest chunk of the report card is going to be based on student test scores, student achievement on the ASPIRE exam that we give in the spring, or the AAA, which is the exam that students take that are very disabled. Okay, so that's the biggest chunk of the report card. Now, um, this is like a phase one report card that we're going to get in December. You're not going to get an overall grade per school this December. You will in December 2017. But, you will, every school will get little mini grades. Three areas, and I'm going to talk to you about what those three areas are, okay? I think this is super important for you guys to get because when December rolls around and those little mini grades come out for the schools that you represent, you're going to, you're going to have a lot of questions to answer. So it's really important that you understand this. Okay, we're going to receive grades in specific categories. Now let's talk about elementary and middle grades, okay? The first category is student achievement. It's based on those test scores that I, the tests that I just told you about. It's going to be 30% of the report per grade in 2017. Alrighty? And for every child that takes this test, um, well, the test achievement is, um, measured in four levels. Level one, very non-proficient. Level two, you're getting close, but you're still non-proficient. Level three, you're good to go, and level four, you have done very, very well. So for every child in your schools that scores a level two, the, the school will get a half a point toward that. And so on for level three, and so on for level four. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, this is based on the ASPIRE and AAA results. Then, in middle school and elementary school, we're going to be graded on learning gains. Okay, again, based on these two tests, it's going to be 40% of the report card grade in 2017. So right now, if you go back, basically 30% plus 40%, 70% of a school's report card grade in 2017 is going to be based on this, on this test. Okay? And learning gains will be calculated based on student growth over two consecutive years. Alrighty? There is the point spread that is awarded for student growth. Questions there?
Going to get to the rest, 60%.
Well, in December of 2016, we're not going to get there. In 17, we're going to get to 100%. Is that what you're asking me?
Well, if that, so 40% of the right, plus the other 60%.
About 10. That's okay. All right, then, this December, we're going to get a little mini grade, the local indicator. It's going to be 10% of the 2017 score, report card grade. And a local indicator is, it is a measurement of how well a school achieves a goal. HOPEZINA is pretty much in charge of helping schools establish a measurable local indicator. For example, HOPE, can you give them an example?
Sure. A lot of the schools are using, some elementary schools are using their leader in the state that's reducing their, uh, discipline and increasing their attendance. Uh, some of the high schools and middle schools are using the formative assessments or the benchmark assessments that we're doing and saying they're going to have a 3% or a 4% gain over the year.
So if you meet your goal, then you get four points for that. And that will be 10% of the grade. Okay, so, okay, I'm telling you all that to tell you this, that when those little mini grades come out in those three areas, okay? Um, I don't know what the press is going to do with that because there's not going to be an overall grade for a school. You know, maybe, you know, maybe, let's say if a school gets an achievement, uh... Not y'all, not y'all. Let's say a school gets a C in achievement, a D in learning gains, an A in the local indicator. Well, I would imagine the press might have a field day with that and combine all of those and divide by three and boom, you know, we have a C school. That's what's coming at us in December, okay? That's what's coming at us. So, now let's go to the other percentages that are coming up for middle and the elementary schools in December. Next year, they're going to add a fourth indicator called Alabama Plan 2020 Program Review. It's going to be 10% of the report card grade. I have no idea what's going to be involved in this indicator, the state has not mentioned it. They haven't told us anything, they don't know either.
Well, they actually did a survey, uh, in 2015. Right. For 2015, they sent out a survey and basically had it within, you know, there was, I was on this committee in 2015 and wasted like a year of my life with everything that the educator committee did, legislators, the Terry Collins that sponsored this report card law, did not like because they felt like it would show the schools in a better light. So then they took everything, and that's this page in your packet, what the educators came out with. And so then they revised completely with everybody, basically it's two years we worked on this. And, um...
It doesn't look anything like what they recommended?
It looked anything like what educators from all over the state worked on that. So this is how we got that. The program review is going to be something very similar to the local indicator. Help schools get points.
What George is telling you right now, that the report card truly has to span the flux right now.
Well, yeah, you're right.
And what I'm hearing, if we go in, if I go into my fall conference with superintendents and State Department folks, this thing could be totally blown apart, and like she says, she's spent a year plus of her life in orthopedic and mobile and others developing this for the legislative body and with the state of moral education. And right now, it's, it's, there's concern across the state about the writing portion of the ASPIRE and several other, other areas of how it's scored. We're asking questions about what, what, what is ACT? Or what are they using, you know, to, to score this? And are we actually in step with them? So, it's a concern.
Major concerns, um, major concerns. This could be a major statewide train wreck, it really could, in December. But we'll see, hopefully we will figure all that, right? We'll see. Next indicator for elementary and middle school is going to be the achievement gap. And we will get points if we take the lowest quartile of achievement, um, in each school. And if we raise those kids up a notch, we will get points for that. Okay, and that's going to be 10% of the report card grade. So that's for elementary and middle school, high school. All right, again, the category is student achievement. At this point in this, well, at student achievement in December 2017 will be 20% of the report card grade based on those tests. There's your point spread again, same thing as elementary and middle. Here's another one, local indicator, same thing as elementary and middle. 5% of the high school report card. Graduation rate is different, of course, in elementary and middle school. The state is going to set the bar for what you have to achieve with regard to graduation rate. So maybe if they set the bar at 90%, and some are, some of our schools don't have a 90% graduation rate, we're going to lose points there. That will be 20% of the 2017 report card. Um, now, take a look at what's coming next year. We're going to add to the 2017 report card, college and career readiness. We, that's going to be 20% of the report card grade for high schools. And you get that 20% if you're graduating class, um, if every kid in your graduating class meets one of the following indicators. They make a benchmark score on the ACT, and I've listed the benchmark scores there. Math, a 22, English an 18, reading a 22, science a 23. Or they make a qualifying score on an AP or IB exam.
On A, one?
Yes, yes, one or the other. Or they enlist in the military. Or if they earn dealing enrollment credit while they're in high school, they earn a silver level or higher on the work keys exam. Or they earn, uh, an approved credential through career check. Okay, so we can get points if our seniors, you know, all of them meet one of those indicators. So that's a good thing because I think most of our kids will do well. Then, we have Alabama Plan 2020, 5%, we don't know what that means, okay? And learning gains, okay? It's going to be 30% of the high school report card based on the ASPIRE. And again, it's going to compare growth over, student growth over two consecutive years. Alrighty, any questions on that?
Go back to the, um, this slide before that.
Well, and I'm going to tell you, it takes a lot of office staff, because we were looking at this last year especially. I just, you've got kids that graduate in December, and you haven't found out this information. It takes a lot of office staff to track those things. It takes a lot of office staff to track those things right there.
Well, they have a program, well, let's go straight to the state.
It's a portal. They have certain times that they download it to the portal. And if it's not right in the portal, it's not going to be right on your report card. So it really puts a lot of work on whoever in your office is doing this.
Later or not, we call off the statistics from the second.
Yeah, and then we would petition those and listen to that.
And John, you'll be happy to know that those percentages that I've listed, that is at two o'clock this afternoon.
Which one thing to know too is that, you know, we went through the presentation about where we're going to work teams and your silver level or higher, you know, the levels you can achieve. And the concern of the workforce ready is that seniors aren't taking the work keys seriously. So our goal this year is to impress on principals with their seniors and the parents, how important is a state to come that day and take your work keys test and do well on. Because it can help you whether you decide to go into career work or go to college. I mean, it's going to help you. It's going to be part of your portfolio. So that's what we've got to try to stress because we have not had good turnout, from what I understand, on taking that work keys for students actually being in school taking them.
Right. All right, so I want to just take a second here to ask you to do something for me. I gave you guys a set of colored sheets, okay? The pink are the elementary schools, the blue are the middle schools, and the gold are the high schools. What I want you to, what you're looking at, I want you to look at the 2015, 2016 scores for each school because that's last year's Aspire scores or the percentages of proficiency. And you'll notice in some areas, your schools are really improving and they're doing very, very well. But I do want to point out that, that particularly at the secondary level, as kids get older, the scores drop, okay? And that's kind of a norm that's always happened. I mean, whether we had the Aspire or not. But you'll notice that the middle school and the high school scores, though some of the middle schools are improving and some of the high schools do really well in specific areas, we have a lot of room for growth. We have a lot of room for growth. And so remember, at the very beginning of this, we talked about we have to be data-driven. This is the data that we're looking at at the central office that Mr. Tyler is leading the charge, that we've got to get kids to take these tests seriously because there's going to be major ramifications if they don't take it seriously in the future. And the report card grades that come out in December are going to reflect, in some cases, that the kids did not take this test seriously. And then we're going to be accountable to the public for that.
How much compensation you got to feed or pattern it? Like I say, all Tyler schools.
At this point, Mr. Tyler, there is no consideration of, there's no distinction between a...
A graduation rate at one of those schools is totally different than a fair hope.
Well, after everything is trained, they don't have to make a change on that. And they'll say that it's not fair. We'll look back and say.
The differences are learning gains and gap because if you look at where you take the child, if you have a child enters Elbert Elementary and they're intended already, they've never had anything, and say they're, you know, really two years behind. But if you move them a year, you've made learning gains. Whereas if you're a child that's at Elbert Elementary and they're already reading, you know, if you take them a year, it's all about what that individual child does. So that's what learning gains was originally supposed to do. And it was like forty to fifty percent that you were taking individual children wherever you got them and you made a whole year's progress. But so they dropped that percent. And the other one was gap. If you're closing the gap, you know, if they're in the ninth grade and they're on fifth grade level and you move and close that gap, that was a tough thing that originally on the report card. So those type things were supposed to even the same. So the top ones, and those are things that took out. So I mean, you know, it's just, you know what's going to happen.
All righty. Have these numbers been shared with the principals? The principals have seen these. Actually, I want to let you know that over the next month, I've been in contact with all the middle and high school principals. The secondary team and myself are going to go out and we're going to in-service all middle and high school faculties about this. And we're going to actually ask them to hand calculate the report cards because we really, once, if we use the data, the drill down data that we have, we can estimate pretty well what the report card rates are going to be in those three indicators. So we're going to do that over the next month.
Report cards are public in December?
Yes. We get the report card information in November. Terry Willheim is going to come in and be very invaluable is that we're going to have to put a package, a PR package together to educate the public about each of these indicators.
So we'll get individual grades, not just...
You'll get individual school grades and a broad district grade.
They'll be embargoed properly.
How, how...
So Alabama, defund education and then create...
How is the district grade?
I'm not sure about that. Oh, I'm not sure.
Okay, that's a good question. I asked, if we have all of these individual grades for schools, how is the district grade going to be?
You know, why not?
No, but they're not. Haven't did all those.
Well, again, that's not...
This white sheet of districts, and they may do the same thing with a broad district and new district. So I signed way back big here.
Okay, and one other thing I just want you to be aware of. In December 2017, we might get bonus points for attendance, okay? If we meet the pre-established attendance rate. So that would be good if we get five-point numbers. All righty. So we're excited about that. So we're going to go out into the schools and we're going to help, we're going to train the teachers and officers and the principals. And I think you were right, Mr. Tyler, or maybe you said it, Marty, I can't remember. But we will get the data in November, but it's embargoed from the press until December.
Basically, we want to share.
We can't share.
But please, still, you get the state gives a chance. Hold this until we tell you.
We've got to release the data in a very good way.
Well, just put it out because nobody will understand.
Well, exactly right.
And so what I was wondering is, are we, are we the board going to have an opportunity to see it before the public sees it?
I think that will be a Mr. Tyler decision.
I'm sorry, that, I didn't mean that.
No, I, that's, I would guide it on that. I'm sure that would be expected. I would think anywhere across the state would expect another scores prior to the release. We'll work on that. We'll find a way.
If we can have some in-service, then we'll understand what we're looking at, right?
Well, that, you know, that's kind of where I was...
To explain when they come to your bell, your place of business at eight o'clock.
Do some math, though.
You're welcome.
How like we did the salary schedule and the broadsheet and the chronology stuff, how we kind of do different things, y'all, and we can kind of do that.
That's amazing to come with your schools because...
Hey, we mentioned, you mentioned earlier about driving the train and blowing the whistle. Who actually is driving this train? Is it the state legislature or is it the state? But it's not the Alabama Department of Education. But they sit in there and they lobby and they try to get them to change these things and try to get them to go in a certain direction. And a lot of times, they don't put enough pressure on them to do it. It's the state. It's the state board.
The state board, you're right about that.
And they'll sit in there and let them make them stupid. You know, for instance, they change the date on a first grader can enroll in school now. It's gone. So you could have a kid that's going to miss, you know, K-5 because their birthday is...
Is this copied after Florida or who's it copied after? Me and Florida was. We're drawing from our...
I don't think Florida, because I think we, from what I understand, we don't, we have learned, the things that Florida put together aren't really working like it's supposed to. And so is Alabama. We steered away from a lot of course, some of my superiors up around.
So we don't have a state that's...
I think I'm a part of the Florida schools and, you know, that's why we live here in...
We got to change, didn't we?
I agree with a lot of the Jeb Bush stuff.
Hey, but if there's a charter school on the hill, will they have to adhere to all this?
I don't know.
But they'll get public knowledge.
But they don't have to build it any of that.
They don't want to take the state assessment or they have to follow under that.
And then, the other question.
She calls us, "Well, charter schools establish in Ball County. It takes, John, I tell you, it takes two hours away from our food."
Did you have any more questions?
Accountability, you can go on and on. The vouchers, none of these schools are taking vouchers to or... They're not going to be graded, I don't think. Probably not, I would say.
So just know that in November, we're going to get this data. But because we have the drill down data, we can pretty much predict what each school's, their mini report cards are going to look like in December. And that's the work that we're going to do in schools. And we're also going to have special meetings for every elementary school faculty as well. Just haven't gotten to that yet. All right, so, there's 136 school districts in Alabama, approximately 1,400 schools in Alabama. And let me tell you how the state is going to assign the grades. The top six percent of schools will get an A. The bottom six percent of schools will receive an F. And the rest of the eighty-four percent, is it eighty-four percent? Eighty-eight percent will get Bs, Cs, and Ds. And as you take this data home tonight and you look through it, I think that we're probably going to, a lot of us, a lot of our schools will fall right in here. Okay? A lot of our schools will. Hopefully, hopefully we'll get some As. Hopefully, we won't get any Fs. But as you'll see, the data will kind of give you a clue. All right. And so honestly, what is this? This is grading on a curve. And I don't think there's any scientific evidence that says that grading on a curve is very professional. So anyway, all right, so we'll go on. Now, that was state accountability. Now we have federal accountability. Now, you've all heard about, you've all heard of No Child Left Behind, okay? This ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, is the, is the new version of No Child Left Behind. So just now, we have to be accountable to the state with the report card. We have to be accountable to the feds with ESSA. All right, and so let me just show you how you're going to be, how we're going to be graded on by ESSA. For grades three through eight, it's the same two test scores and attendance rate. All right, and for high school, it's the same two tests and graduation rate. Okay, so it's simpler. There's not as many variables with ESSA. But one of the problems, well, with ESSA, achievement is based on reading and math, just like the report card grades, reading and math. But with ESSA, we only get credit for kids that score in level three and level four. We don't get any half points for level twos. So it probably will be a little bit more difficult to meet the federal mandate. There's not as much rule.
With No Achieving a Gap or No Learning Gains, it's strictly proficiency, that's it.
Right. Okay, so that's federal. Okay? So now you can see why we need to look at the numbers. Okay, we have to be data-driven. We have to figure out as a district what we're doing that is working and what we're doing that's not working. You know, it's kind of like, we go through life doing some things that are not very effective and we just keep doing them because we really have never analyzed why we do them and if it's working. So that's what we're trying to do here in, in the central office is look at what's working and what's not working. We're going to train the teachers. We're going to drill down into the data to make instructional decisions for a district and in the classrooms. We're going to show the teachers how to use data in their individual classrooms so that they can construct instruction that best meets the needs of kids. All righty, we use, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but we use Scantron. We use Scantron for benchmarking and for formative assessments. Do y'all know what a benchmark is? A benchmark assessment? Mr. Tyler was saying every, every teacher teaches a course of study. Like I'm the U.S. history teacher one, uh, one teacher. I teach forty-five standards, okay? Benchmark assessments are given to my kids two or three times a year and it measures how well they master those standards that I've covered. Okay? The Scantron benchmark assessments are computer adaptive. By that I mean, they're taken on computer. Mr. Prisberry and I are taking the U.S. history one benchmark assessment. And I get a question right and he gets a question wrong, my next question's going to be different than his next question. That's how a lot of computerized assessments are. So at the end, the benchmark assessment score is going to be tailored to that particular student. All right? Then we have formative assessments. And that is just a measure of, we build the formative assessments at the district level. And it's just a, another way to figure out if the kids are learning what we're teaching.
But the assessment component is based on what we know the teachers in our schools are expected to be teaching those standards on that particular time.
Which is time to pace. All right, we put in front of it, we promise. All right, so, do you see now why RTI, the Response to Intervention, when we take those kids that are not proficient, it's so important to figure out ways to help them become more proficient because now, we're going to be graded on that. I mean, it's always important, but now we're actually going to be, suffer the consequences as a district and a school if we don't pay attention to these poor achievers. Absolutely. And then we talked about dyslexia. There's the definition of dyslexia. We've got to do what's called a universal screening. We've got to screen 31,000 kids this year. We have to, the law says, those kids that score in the lowest quartile on this dyslexia screener have to, they have to take four additional screeners. So we're not only having to come up with one screener for 31,000 people, we're also having to come up with four additional screeners for elementary and middle and high school.
The state department, state department.
Yes, it's a law.
Did they fund it?
No, it's unfunded. So what we're doing, Mr. Myer...
I thought they passed the law there. They couldn't mandate anything that funded.
Well, we usually only did, but that doesn't seem to be over in truth.
We're trying to find free ones to use. And it's hard to find free, free tests. Yes, thank you. All right, so you can see that, as much as possible, we want to marry what we're doing with RTI with dyslexia so we can get a double ban for our book. Because both of these are really important. All right, so, I'm almost done. So let me tell you what the people in my, in our office look for with good instruction. What are we looking for? We're looking for, I don't know if you know what ARI is, Alabama Leading Initiative. We're looking for teachers that do these three things. And I do is when the teacher directly instructs students. It doesn't look the same in every classroom. It can be so much fun to be creative and teach things the way that you want to do. The next segment, we want to see teachers create things for kids to... we want to see teachers create things for kids to do with the teacher based on what was just taught. And then the U do, we want the teachers to come up with independent practice for those kids based on what was just taught. That is tried and true instruction. It works every time. And what we want is, we want kids to be actively involved in learning. Sometimes that involves a computer. It involves getting up and doing something, building a project, going outside and doing an observation. Active engagement. The days of a classroom being everybody in around, everybody sitting there silently, those are gone. Kids don't learn well that way. They have to be engaged in instruction. So we're looking for differentiated instruction. We're looking for teachers that try lots of different strategies. Alrighty? Using computers and technology where appropriate. So, what are some of the real good things that are happening? We have more dual enrollment opportunities for kids at the high school, Kierfner, as well as the University of Alabama. We have increased enrollment in AP courses, and that's always a good thing. We have the Guided Reading Initiative that we've established at the elementary schools that is so exciting. The teachers are just embracing it. It's a new way to teach reading.
But they, they developed, and I went to a lot of these guided reading workshops, these folks have developed, I guess we would, Facebook.
Pages?
Facebook pages to where teaching guided reading can share with each other across the system about what's working and what's not, which I like, it's fantastic.
Awesome. It's just awesome. Really is. Like I said, Marty is going to lead the charge for talking about scheduling at high school level throughout the district, and that's in January. We're going to continue to use our computers as instructional tools. And we really are, want to foster the development of career academies in high schools. Mr. Tyler and I went to Gulf Shores High School last Friday and saw a phenomenal presentation of what they're doing at that school with their career availability, uh, career, um, these, occupational choices that they're giving to their students, occupational preparation. So we're really hoping that that will really take off. And last but not least, we want that pen text to pass. And that is it. Do you have any questions? Thanks.
One thing I want to say, just to emphasize, Joyce will be in those meetings next year, but Hope and Seth and Marty, I told y'all, that over here, we're going to sit with each principal one-on-one for the end of the year, for the end of your PLP. And to every person, they actually, through the 10 months we've been together, realize how much we're stressing them being instructional leaders in school. Now, are all of them there yet? No. But do all of them realize how important it is and what we're looking for? And I told you before, some principals actually looked at us and said, "I never really took the data serious before." These are principals. But now I realize that I've got to immerse myself and learn this stuff. And that was refreshing. Now, they've got to deliver. But we've got more that get it now than don't, and we're going to bring those along that don't. And hopefully they can catch up and we'll, that's what we do, we're there to help them. But it was, it was amazing to sit one-on-one with all 45 principals to their approach and what they want to do for the coming years.
I'm just very excited because, I mean, I've been on the board a long time, and for the first time, I feel like, I feel confident that the, that the data has been used to determine where we are and where we need to go. And even if we're not where we want to be, I think as long as we have a plan to get somewhere else, then I, I think the public will, will have a little patience with us. But I, I feel like we have a plan and I'm very excited.
Well, and I, I agree absolutely with Sid. And I want to add and appreciate Woodburn, Tyler, you know, the amount of information that we have, and you know, we may not understand it, looking at it, but I sure know I can make phone calls and say, "Hey, go over this with me again." It's something that we haven't had privilege, the opportunity to see before so we can better understand where we are and where we need to be.
And really, I invite you guys to your fear the power meetings, you know, as we explain all this information and drill down into the data with the teachers and the principals. Come on.
Well, I appreciate too, is the board you ask questions. And some of them are difficult questions. And I always encourage my board you follow, ask me the difficult questions because that tells me you're engaged. Now, a question that has some substance to it, I mean, not something that would chase rabbits, but that's what y'all do. Mr. Tarwater backing up and asking for a better explanation there. I mean, you're always asking questions, and that's important as a board, to, to me it is anyway. It just tells me that you're engaged and you're interested in what we're doing.
Well, I think we've, I think we've received data in the past. I think we get the data and I think it's like, okay, here's where we are, this is where our scores are going to be like this year, this is what, but I think what's, I think what's always been missing is the component of, okay, well, how are we going to fix this? Where do we go from here? I think that's what's, what's always been missing.
I agree. Definitely did a, I think Woodburn was here before. And, and somebody that knows what they're doing, if they were put in a position like Mr. Tyler had done with her, you know, she's showing us where we need to go and how we need to get there. And there's a difference in having a roadmap and seeing where, where you need to go, how you going to get there. And can you do it? What's the target? You know, and if it's working, you stick with it. If it's not, you better change. Or something's going to happen and, and make the hire that you did and for you to be back, you know, I mean, can't, can't be, it's got to be good. You know, I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable.
And you as a board, thank you, thank you, Paul. And you as a board realizing the importance and stressing academics. And Joyce coming back, coming back home, getting in with Hope and the Curriculum Division, she'd been blown away by the, the knowledge factor that our people at the central office and lots of had, but just maybe weren't, it wasn't being exploited enough. Is that why?
Or maybe not organized.
Not organized enough, doing silos and stuff. So, so it's a, y'all bought in.
That's why it's so important to have that one person that's coordinating everybody because.
So all the principals, everybody when we got together for our first meeting, it was a one-stop shop. And here it is. You know, with her, with all, and Hope, and all of those folks that are involved in Marty. That's where it is.
Thank you.
Yes, that's, that's just, can we get notice of that?
I can send you to high school.
Can we also get a copy, whether it's put on E-boards or not, but this presentation, to be able to go back and.
Fast.
I'm sorry, I think it's halfway through, she's taking notes.
Never know, she was, she didn't come.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
And you're not a good.
No, I'm not a good. Y'all, they. Yes, financial update.
You okay? Probably not going to take more than an hour or so.
I believe my young friend, God, has under the weather a little bit.
I believe he is, I can tell when he first.
Let's have my coffee fit. Oh, man, here we go.
Oh, I see. It might slide a little bit.
This should be short and sweet. Alright. And then, no financial update next month. I mean, you guys are very sad. This will be you, doing a year-end close, and so we'll report on the year-end close in November. Alright, as of the, the end of August, we had $243 million in revenue, $232 million in expenses, we had about 11.6 excess balance, give us an equity fund balance of $55.9 million. We're one more month in this fiscal year. Let me see, we've achieved about 95% of our budget revenue. We've spent about 88% of our budget expenditures by the end of August. August and September is kind of an interesting month because you're, you hired all your teachers to start the year, but you don't get your state funding in that until the start of the new fiscal year. And so you have a little bit of a lag time between when you have those people on the payroll from when, you know, your actual FY17 funding kicks in. And so sometimes you, you do have to carry those expenses for that month and a half, that two-month period until it's recognized in that next fiscal year. Is that unique to growing systems? Uh, you know, that, that particularly is just unique to Alabama, having a non-30 year-end fiscal year. Most other states have June 30th. That runs with the school year, which would make everyone's life just so much, so much more. It makes sense. I was afraid that we just don't like to worry about. We, you know, they, the association was. Just change your calendar. There was a, there was a push for that about five years ago. But yeah, it, it is disruptive. So when we collect the books, we've got to stop everything to get, you know, all the POs and accounts payment reconciled. That's in the middle of school year. A lot of people don't understand that process. But it is what it is. You can see our, our local revenue, we dipped down last month, we recovered this month. There are fund balance, about $55 million there, about $5 million owed above where we were this time last year. To see, we've achieved about 98% of our, our, our property taxes came in a little bit under what I was expecting in the budget. Probate judge, car tax has exceeded it. You know, breaking over $4 million for this fiscal year. Sales tax continues to come in strong. You can see we're at $33.9 million looking year-to-date compared to about $31.5 million where we were year-to-date last year. So over $2 million increase in sales tax. But we still have another reporting. Well, this, when that Amazon tax kicks in, will we get any share of that? It's a good question. I'm still trying to work out logistics of how that's, that's going to work. How I believe it's, it's going to be, is that it's, it's an 8% tax, 4% goes to the state, 4% goes to the counties based on the populace. And I think 4% goes to cities based on their populace too. So it's, that's a very interesting way to classify receipts in regards to that. So I guess, you know, I've had a very kind of informal discussion with people at the county to see how they were going to classify that. Currently, we get all the use tax that, that comes in. If it's classified as use tax, hopefully it followed that same kind of provision. If they calculate it as a new tax, then I'm not sure exactly what that percentage breakdown would be. I hear you, yeah. I mean, it's like a use tax to me. I mean, they're outside of the state of Alabama buying goods, so I mean. And it's just the game. You know, it's, it's interesting. I, I know the county does a really good job following some, you know, I, I think some examples they set was like 1-800 Contacts and QVC and some of these places that, that, that they do pay the full amount of sales tax. In some areas, it's like 10%. So it's going to be interesting to see how that forms when these vendors that have done a really good job in paying the 10% decides, well, I'm just going to go to the 8% statewide method because it's easier to keep up with. Will that hurt us? Will Amazon offset that? I mean, there's a lot of kind of interesting things to think about in regards to that. Judging by what my wife buys. I think I got an email I'll send here. Anyway, it'll, it'll be interesting. I, I think we'll have to have further discussions with the county on how they're going to classify that, that tax, and if it's going to be use tax or it's going to be new tax. And if it is a new tax, does it go to the same percentage breakdown? And so circle back around on that one. That one is to be, to be continued.
Thank you, John. Okay, we'll go over our agenda. Number, number two of the agenda, number 10, leave the lessons of personnel. Number 11, retirement reservation of personnel. Number 12, transfer, potential transfer of personnel. Performant personnel. Number 14, extra work for extended periods. Add information to agenda number two, transfer reassignment of personnel. Agenda item one, state department of law firm. Agenda item two.
I'm trying to get back to the agenda.
Home or?
Oh, there it is.
You have any? Agenda item one was, was a state department of law firm. Agenda item two, FY2017 Vol County Board of Education budget. Agenda item three, public works. Agenda item four, business proposal. Agenda item five, approval of contracts sunrise solutions. Agenda item six, approval of contracts blasted in page two. Agenda item seven, approval of new board policy, homeschool students, athletic participation. Agenda item eight, dissemination of new board policy, service animals.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Why are we having to do this?
We've had some issues in local schools, but then it's also.
On the service animal?
Okay, and I have one more question that you can answer. It talks about dogs and small ponies. We're not really going to consider a pony, are we?
Yeah, some of them broken down into buildings.
All, all of it, a lot of it, a lot of it hinges on the definition of what is a service animal versus what is a therapy animal. So, ponies actually, well, the only question that we can ask basically, the equivalent version is, the only thing that schools can do is say, "Is this a service animal?" You can't say, "Please show me your papers, please show me this, please show me that." Is this a service animal? And then based upon their response, I mean, the only thing that we can respond with is, "Tell me, what specifically is this dog trained to do?" And then we pretty much provide access to do whatever that individual needs. But, you know, people just bring a cute little child or what have you. That's, that's more therapy type stuff and it's not actual, actually based on their disability.
And so.
We've had a few issues.
While I understand that there are some needs for service dogs, and I totally get that, what is the plan going forward to make sure it's not a disruption in the classroom when you have a class full of 30 second graders who go look at the doggy? I mean, I know where our hands are tied, I'm just curious.
You mean, in the classroom and go look at the dog before?
Well, no, I assume the service animal is in the classroom with the child.
Well, I mean, it wasn't so much that it was in the classroom, and it wasn't student center. This is for parents who are showing up at school during various events. So it's not students.
We're not talking about having a dog in the classroom.
No, we're not talking about the students. We're talking about the parents or outsiders that someone may just show up here at a board meeting and say.
When I was reading through some of that, some of it maybe thought that, you know, some of it saying it's not a teacher's responsibility.
Well, there are the, uh, service dogs that monitor students' blood sugar. We've had some inquiries about that, like, "Oh, the tail and the child's blood sugar's dropping," but we don't have any presently, and so, we've had some inquiries about, what is that?
Too big bark.
How they trying? Very expensive.
Get it.
We have answered all your questions, Mr. Tom. We have answered two questions. We don't just dream up policies to write out.
And I, and I, when I knew reading, there was probably a need for it, or something had occurred with it, when I kept reading pony, that's what really kept making me wonder if someone was really, were we writing this because someone had acquired that?
You wanted a pony when you were a child.
No.
Yeah, we getting it now.
Sorry, I know.
That's why, all right. Uh, agenda item nine, AAASD District One director election.
Who should we vote?
I don't know.
Oh, don't get caught chewing gum.
That's agenda item ten, leave of absence of personnel. Agenda item eleven, retirement and resignation of personnel. Agenda item twelve, transfer, intent to transfer of personnel. Agenda item thirteen, informant of personnel. Agenda item fourteen, extra work for extended periods. Agenda item fifteen, suspension of personnel, I think. That's all I have this time.
So, if you have any questions, is there anything else on your agenda? Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add before we adjourn? Any press questions? I'm sorry.
I think y'all were polled for that special board meeting, uh, October, I believe.
We were, but I didn't, I never found.
I think, I think Louis told me that, I think everybody responded and agreed. Tom, more than great.
It's all Mr. Ward's fault.
Yeah, well, just trying to save some money.
We're good.
It's a wrap, it's a wrap. I'm only two miles from home.
Yeah, how about that? Yeah, how about that? Yeah.